All right, everybody. It is 6:18 PM and we are back in public. We were having some technical issues earlier, so I'm going to just kind of start over. We started the meeting at 6:01. We have here Heather Raymond, Christina Darling, Reagan Lampier, and Rob Johnson, Mr. Poska. We also have guests Chris Smith, Dan Alexander, and Tom Beer. We went into non-public under RSA 91832C at 6:03 PM with some questions about JKAA. But as we started our discussion in non-public, we realized that the questions don't need to be in non-public. So I'm not going to ask to seal these minutes. And I'm going to kind of ask Ms. Darling to repeat her question about restraint and seclusion generally, and Mr. Alexander to tell us publicly what the answer was, because I think it's better in a public discussion anyways.
So what I had brought up is that at one of our schools, there have been a number of restraints and seclusions. It's a very high number. And so my concern is if there's a lack of training, if there is a problem with the way we've written the policy, how do we make it so that these incidences, because they're pretty extreme, in my personal opinion, for what that is worth to anybody? So yeah, is it a training thing? Is it a how do we improve?
Just introductions. This is Mr. Alexander, our head of special education. Director, is that the official title?
Director, yes.
Director of special education.
So that particular school that we're discussing and another school in our district are schools that have our project achievement classrooms in that. Those are our most challenging behavioral students. They have social, emotional issues along with their behavioral challenges. We have these programs to keep our students in districts. We really pride ourselves on having some programs district-wide to really keep our students here in our district in their home schools, with their peers, with their families, and be able to be parts of our community. The numbers are higher in those schools due to that fact. Part of our current policy, and I think this policy is that we do monthly review all of our restraint and seclusion numbers. We look at trends. We look at particular issues that may be coming up. We look at are there trainings, as you just pointed out, that are needed and required. All of our staff receive training, our paras receive training in crisis prevention intervention. We also go above and beyond that and refresh our folks annually in that program as well. Currently, for our project achievement programs, we have Dr. Allison Roy, who's doing consultant work with us. And she is evaluating the program. She is meeting with our staff. She's talked with teachers, paras, administrators, a couple of parents as well to help us really look at our program, making sure we are doing the best that we can. If you're not familiar with Dr. Roy, she's one of the trauma specialists in our state. She does amazing work. She's worked with our district for almost four years in different capacities. This one is currently to look directly at project achievement and help support us in any improvements we need in that area in training. She has provided us PD directly around some of this trauma-informed care, as well as we have a grant that we are doing training with the Ross Green Group. Next one will be on Tuesday. There's two sessions available for all of our staff. It has been targeted primarily for our paras in giving them more opportunities for training. So we continuously look to improve our professional development and opportunities to work with our challenging students and try to make them as successful as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Go ahead, Ms. Lampier.
You said that the high numbers of restraints and seclusion is because our program is project achievement. And I just didn't know if there was another program in the state that's similar to ours that we could compare ourselves to.
I don't know. I mean, we are really an anomaly in our size. I spend a lot of time with directors around the state. And one of the things that I know it may sound silly in this context, but I'm able to really brag about our programs that we have in keeping our kids in our district. We have had multiple calls just in my year and a half for schools that have wanted to send kids to our programs. You know, currently, our Signs of Learning program, which I'll brag about for a quick minute, has six districts that have sent kids to them. Plus, we have a seventh district that has entertained and questioned us. So we have a lot of districts that are interested to try to have students come to receive programming from us as well. I wish I could answer, but I'm not aware of one.
Do we have any out-of-district kids in the project achievement?
I'm sorry?
Do we have? Sorry about the mask. Do we have any out-of-district kids in the project achievement?
None that we have tuitioned in and brought in. We do have students that are potentially in foster homes or in National Children's Home that have attended our program in the past year. I don't know the exact number, but we have not tuitioned kids in, just trying to keep the fidelity of the program. And we would have to really work out to make sure everybody was comfortable with that, too.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands. You mentioned that out-of-district placements, if kids are sent to schools that are not public, that those, the restraint and seclusion are kept track of differently, so they're not known?
So they're not reported to the state as the state reporting requires the numbers from public schools to be reported of incidents that occur within a public school?
So there's no way to compare our numbers to like an out-of-district placement?
So if you're asking if we were to compare our numbers of restraints for Broad Street to Valley Collaborative Elementary, that I don't know. I would have to reach out to Valley to see. I'm sure that they I don't know if they collect overall data. They do do individual data, behavioral data on each student as far as behaviors and things like that. I don't know if they do accumulative data and report that to the state and Massachusetts or not. But anytime there is an incident, we are always given copies of that.
All right, thank you.
Just for clarity. So most schools in New Hampshire, elementary schools have like if your student is, you know, in that school because of where they live, that's where they get their special education services, correct? Or they're sent out of district?
Correct.
Nashville does it a little different?
So when we have students with specific needs that can't be met within their home school, we have district-wide programs that specialize in meeting the needs of students. Other districts don't have that necessarily.
So our project achievement are those kind of intermediate students where instead of sending them out of district, we've been able, because of our size, to accommodate in at Broad Street and a little bit at Birch Hill as well, I think.
Correct, yep.
Okay. And did we have another one at some point? Wasn't there one at like Mount Main Dunstable?
Just those two. We have other intensive needs programs throughout our district that we've talked about. You know, 13 different classrooms that meet the specific needs of other students that have challenges.
Thank you. And Ms. Darling, I'm sorry, we kind of got away from your question. So going back.
Could we theoretically compare Birch Hill to Broad Street's project achievement numbers? Because I do see here there is a very, very large difference in the sense that Birch Hill has 11 seclusions and Broad Street had 72.
And I mean, that is a comparison. So I'm not sure what further comparison you'd like to look at.
Would that maybe then suggest that the program can be done in a way that does not have such an extreme number of seclusions?
That's why we have Dr. Roy working with us, is to examine differences between the two and see what it is between the two programs, even though they are similar in nature as far as how we execute behavior planning and behavioral support, to better align them and make sure there is an alignment between the two programs.
As the director of the program, how do you enforce this policy?
How do I enforce the policy?
Yep.
I think all policies are enforced by starting at the building level so that it is something that is done by the building principal to make sure that these things are as far as restraint and seclusion is being documented. I think that's the essence of part of the policy is the documentation along with what the law states. All of our staff are familiar. We've given this update. We've met with special ed staff as well as administration. They received the policy as well as the technical advisories we've gotten from the state. And I'm part of the restraint and seclusion team that meets on a monthly basis to review the numbers that we have on a monthly basis to make those determinations. Being a CPI trainer, I also train our staff. If issues come up during that, we talk about specific issues. If there's ever an injury or anything else that comes from a staff member or a student, something I'm made immediately aware of. And I'm able to look both as a director and a trainer to see if we're following the policies and procedures outlined in the restraint policies and seclusion policies, as well as CPI, and do we follow that? Does that answer what you're?
As an individual who trained our staff to follow the law, knowing that the law says as of 2024, limitation of the use of restraint to emergencies only. Restraint shall only be used in a school or facility to ensure the immediate physical safety of persons when there is a substantial and imminent risk of serious bodily harm to the child or others. Would you consider a child that is eight years old throwing a shoe to be an emergency?
So as when I train, we don't get into specific situations. That is what we preach within CPI, and that is how CPI is issued and trained. I don't know if this is the form that we should talk about individual cases or not.
I guess this is just one of many examples that I have here of situations that are happening. And I'm glad that we're doing training to change this. But I want to make sure that, as well as the training, that, you know, you as our director have kind of the same mind of what falls under emergency use, because that's the law. That's not even just a school board policy. And I've learned recently that the law is never as cut and dry as we think it is.
That's why there's two technical advisories, one clarifying the original one that they put out. And you know, Ms. Darling, I worked in a residential program for 11 years, back before any of these restraint and seclusion laws came out. I can tell you that not only is restraints and seclusions traumatic for a child, it's traumatic for an adult. I carry a lot of baggage with me from 11 years of doing that. I take that very seriously. And it's nothing that, when I train and ask anyone I've trained, and I hope they would say that, that, you know, I really preach to them. And we work with all of our trainers and meet with all of our trainers to talk about that this is not something that's taken lightly, that this is something that you do in the last-case scenario for that level of safety because there's going to be a level of trauma that occurs to not only the child, but you as the adult. And we hope that we're training people to use all of the techniques that come before the physical restraint. And as CPI, we spend a lot of time on the other techniques. And we talk primarily about the verbal de-escalation, how to use proximity, how to use other things to de-escalate the children before we get to an incident where it is something that's of that emergency use because it is something that, you know, we hope that they never have to use. Sometimes they do. And that is the nature of what occurs. It's not what we like or what we want to happen. But, you know, believe me, I take it very seriously with my background and the work that I've done over the years.
So can we both? Correct me if I'm wrong. I think what you're saying is that we both kind of agree that in the past there have been incidences that were not up to training standards as they necessarily should be today. And we are working on improving with an active plan in place, you know, working with the trauma specialist and coming up with plans for improvement. Is that accurate?
I think that the district's position is that the district has already been following, like the new law is here, but the district's position is that the district was already following the requirements of the new law. Having said that, I was on the committee that heard HB 491 up at the State House. And Nashville was not an example of places that were doing it wrong. In all of the six hours of testimony that we heard on this bell, the only testimony about Nashville was about how great Dr. Crisp is for MTSS, which was.
Fun fact, Dr. Crisp has gotten rid of seclusion.
Yep. So Nashville didn't make a list of places that people were testifying to violations. It's not to say that, you know, we haven't had places where we could do better. But I think our position is that we have not violated the law previously or the law now. Having said that, I did vote at the State House in my committee, and I voted at the State House on the floor to pass it because I think that the law makes some significant and important updates to practice that will enhance safety for everyone. And I think the biggest one is the way that you physically restrain a child. Prone restraint is now explicitly prohibited. Those of us, you said the law is not black and white, right? When I read the previous, I was like, well, of course, this prohibits that kind of restraint because it would crush his airway. But there were people who testified to us that they felt differently, not from Nashville. So it makes it explicit. The other thing that the law changes is how long a child can stay in a seclusion and who needs to be checking in to make sure that that child is still dysregulated. And at what point do we need to then escalate it to someone else, right? Like you can't leave a kid in seclusion for an hour. Like, that's too long.
And I think over the I think what this policy and the law demonstrates is that this policy has been updated. This will be the third time in three years that this policy has been updated as things have come forward. To Ms. Raymond's point, the major points of this update to the policy is about the prone restraints and excluding them and the definition of seclusion. Mr. Alexander referred to this earlier. This, we got a technical advisory about this beginning of September. And I think then we had multiple discussions about what that technical advisory really meant, particularly as it pertains, not necessarily to the prone restraint, to how it defines seclusion. And that was a significant challenge for administrators across the state about how that seclusion was being defined. I think finally, about the middle of October and of October, we received another technical advisory that kind of provided some guidance on it. But Mr. Alexander, myself, and Mr. Beer were on a conference call with the state where we kind of expressed our confusion about how they were defining seclusion and what that would have meant for numbers going forward. And we needed some clarification on that. And to the state's credit, I think they really heard all this. And actually, we had our attorney, Steve Bennett, as part of that discussion, who also reached out to the state on our behalf to express what, you know, what we're asking for clarification on. I think Mr. Alexander and his team in previous administrations have constantly been updated on that. Mr. Alexander has gone to the schools and presented this information to all of his staff. We've worked with the building principals to explain what these updates have meant. It's not something we take very lightly. And I think Mr. Alexander's previously point about how traumatic a restraint is is significant because as part of the CPI process, there's a reflection piece afterwards where the team kind of reflects back about what happened, what was the, you know, what triggered the event that happened? How can we do that better? How can we work and develop different behavior plans going forward so we can avoid these types of situations? So this is not something that's taken lightly. And it's certainly something that's constantly discussed and reflected upon after the fact. And I think that's why we're seeing a lot of the changes in the policies now. Because as things come up, I think, you know, at the state level, it's necessary to reflect about what that means to the policy and the law.
And I just want to bring everyone's attention to our packet. Our previous policy for JKAA starts on page 13, and it's two pages. And then we're recommending that we adopt the School Board Association's policy, which starts on page 15 and goes until page 28. It is extensive. It's very, very specific and clear about what things are prohibited, what things are allowed. But then if you go down, what trainings are required, how our staff are supposed to handle these things, when restraints may or may not be used. There's a whole, like, page of that. And then there's a whole two or three pages about when seclusion is allowed and how we make sure that we're having co-regulators involved in seclusion instead of using because seclusion is not a timeout. And I think that I think that a lot of us parents have that in our brain. Like, seclusion just means we're going to go take a timeout in the calm-down room. And that's kind of it, but not, right? So seclusion is really about having helping a child to get regulated so that they're safe to return to the classroom. And these things really can only be used in circumstances where the child is posing a danger to themselves or a danger to others in the classroom. And we talked a lot at the State House about when do you remove the child from the situation and when do you move the classroom from the child, right? And so a lot of that, I'm glad I'm not in the classroom and I don't have to make those calls. But this policy is very clear about helping people to tease that stuff out.
And to be fully transparent, when this came out and JKAA was updated about the end of October, I had been in conversation, obviously, Mr. Alexander, Mr. Bear, and myself in working on this. But I also had shared this with Ms. Raymond. We were assured, we were told by the state that they were also going to be provided updated forms. So our plan was to bring JKAA and JKAA-R together at the same time. Those forms have been presented to the state. So Ms. Raymond and I decided, you know, this is the updated law. Let's bring JKAA forward now because it's in place now. We should be reflecting that it's in place. And when we get those updated forms, we will bring that forward there to kind of complete the whole process.
Just clarity on that.
Just clarity on that. Previously, I think the regulation just stated you had to have a form with certain information on it. And we, and then it had, the restraint obviously was timely in reporting to the parent. Well, what Mr. Poska is talking about is these are supposed to be the exact forms that you're supposed to use that were due to us in July of twenty-three.
Which I think, you know, what I learned at the State House was that every district has their own form. So, so they're not necessarily reporting the same exact thing for the same exact incident. And that's not helpful for, you know, statisticians. Um, I also wanted to bring your attention to page twenty-four in our packet. Um, I don't know what page of the policy is because it's so long. Um, but on page twenty-four at the bottom, I, it says complaints of violation. Um, on there, it says exactly what, um, a parent can do if they feel that a restraint or seclusion was used inappropriately or inconsistently with the law. And so, of course, you start with going to the superintendent. Um, people can appeal it to the school board. But then there's also a way to appeal these things or to let the state know so that the state can take action if parents feel that that's necessary. Uh, my hope is that we can resolve things in-house, but sometimes we can't. And so, there's now a mechanism that's very clearly spelled out on how to do that. Um, so, do we have any questions about, or any, does anyone have any concerns about kind of throwing away our two pager and replacing it entirely with this, uh, fifteen pager? No, uh, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen pager.
This is much better. I think it's clearer. I think it's, um, you know, it just, there's so many different things, uh, like it, it, like in our two pager, things aren't, things aren't defined. There's not as many, um, explanations of certain things. It doesn't lay out the timeline of when everyone needs to be informed of everything. So, I think it's really important that we do update it with this.
So, if we do adopt this policy, one of the things that is required under the policy is that we disseminate the policy. So, it'll be on our website. Um, but as well, we should be making efforts to make sure that we have it in a place that is accessible to people when they enroll and that we make sure we have it accessible to people in multiple languages. Um, and certainly, when kids get an IP or a five oh four, they should be reminded that this policy exists. That's not really policy committee's job, just, I just wanted to throw it out there.
Elm Street has this super cute thing, like it's a little parent survival guide in their front office, has all the important, like, numbers you could need and stuff like that. And it would be so cool, first of all, if every school did that, please pay attention, guys, we need this. Um, and also, if every time you're, you have to go pick up your child or they have to send home or restrain your seclusion or whatever the incident is, if it came with one of those little booklets that says, hey, this is what our policy is. Here's where you can look up the law. If you disagree with something here, this is your process. As much as I hate wasting trees.
No, I agree. I, when Elm Street had that piloted a few years ago, it was pre-COVID, it was wonderful.
So silly.
And then COVID happened.
Ridiculously.
So, does anyone have any questions or concerns about any of the items in the new replacement policy? I know it's very long.
I do, I have a couple of, I ha- I have some, some questions that are specific.
Um, why Mr. Alexander came so that he would be here prepared to answer all of our questions.
Let's see, where is it? Okay, um.
Should've printed out a copy for you.
With, with all the understaffing that we have, are we tracking all the restraints and seclusions? And, um, you know, are we keeping all the records that we need to?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that's not negotiable. Um, that, you know, we will, we will have staff stay until whatever time they need to because those reports need to be completed within that timely manner. Because there is, it is, even though our policy does not have that, it is outlined in the, the current restraint law that we have to notify parents before the child arrives home and send the report home within twenty-four hours.
Yeah, um, this, um, that was another, one of my questions that I had was, um, um, so we have certain steps. We have the initial notification, then the written notification to the superintendent, and then, um, the written information to parent or guardian, and then the final investigation and report. Does the, does the parent get the final investigation and report as well?
Are you talking about if the parent feels that something was done inappropriately?
No, just so that they have it.
They get a, they get a copy of the restraint report.
So, they're, okay, but not the final investigation and report? That's something that the, is school does in?
I think the investigation has to do with if there's an appeal to the restraint itself. Because we don't do an investigation on every restraint or seclusion.
It, it says that the superintendent or superintendent's designee shall review and investigate each incident of seclusion or restraint for determination as to whether the use complied with this policy.
Page twenty-two in the packet, I don't know what page of the policy.
So, it's not part of our current policy? This would be the new policy?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I thought, yeah. Yeah, so, um, so it says that the, you know, it talks about the notifications that parents should get. But I am, I'm wondering, if the superintendent is reviewing each incident to see whether the use complied with the policy, um, if, if it doesn't comply with the policy or it does, um, doesn't the parent deserve to have that information?
Yes.
I would, I would say yes. I mean, I, that's my feeling, I don't know.
Yeah, because it doesn't say in this policy that the parent is, should be getting this final investigation and report information. So, that was something that I was concerned about.
Um, just to clarify, I, I'm reading that last, and the final report should include findings and conclusions, the documentary and other physical evidence, or a summary of oral evidence, and a description of actions taken in response to those findings and conclusions.
So, I, to me, that sounds like an internal document that a superintendent or their designee or the school principal might use, um, to then, like, the, to report out to the state, but also to, um, do some personnel management in that, you know, we reviewed this and as a result, now I want you to take CPI training again.
I, I don't know, it just seems, it seems to me that the school determines that the restraint and seclusion was used incorrectly. That the parents should know that.
We both, we all just agreed it's a traumatic event.
Yep.
And you, we can't possibly justify not telling a parent if a traumatic event happened to their child and we, under our own investigation, realized it was done outside of policy. We can do that without stating staff names. We can do that while, you know, and if somebody is gonna go for a witch hunt, they're gonna go for a witch hunt either way. But at least hold accountable anyone that is actively doing something wrong.
Are we expecting this to be part of the forms that the state is supposed to be developing and giving us?
Well, I think the forms, I think that the parents and the families deserve some type of written notification. And that's how I'm interpreting that final investigation report, that that's part of it. Uh, and then I think that has to be shared with the parents. That's how I'm interpreting it.
I mean, it doesn't say in the policy. I would prefer to have something like that included in the policy. I don't know if we could speak to our lawyer about it or anything.
Yeah, I think that's a, you know, we can run it by Mr. Bennett to see what's necessary, but.
All right, that's.
I don't, I don't think necessary should have anything to do with it. I, I think when it comes to the law and our policies, the law should be the absolute minimum standard for us. We live in New Hampshire, live free or die. I think we can all agree it's safer to drive with our seat belts on, but that's not a law. We should not, we should hold ourselves to better standards.
I, I had a question too about the co-regulators. Um, let me see.
Yeah, hold on, I'm just, I'm gonna, while you ask that question, I'm gonna make my note about following up with Mr. Bennett.
All right.
So that I don't forget.
I would say, can you, when you follow up with him, can you ask specifically if putting it in there would cause harm?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have the page numbers from the, um, from the actual, um, from the actual packet. I, I just wrote, I printed it out and wrote the page numbers that I had.
That's smart.
Um, not smart, but in the use of seclusion, it talks about required use of co-regulators.
Yep.
And it says, um,
That's.
When seclusion is used, um, the principal or when she or he or she is not immediately available, some, shall designate a co-regulator to monitor the child and develop a plan to help the child manage their state of regulation and their return to a less restrictive setting. And it says the co-regulator, co-regulator shall check the child at regular intervals not to exceed thirty minutes between any one interval. And I'm wondering how quickly the co-regulator is included in any event. And also, there's, um, four, four, four preferences as to choosing the co-regulator. The first is a trusted adult selected by the child, then a clinician or counselor trained in trauma-informed practices. And then a staff member known to have a positive relationship with the child. And finally, a staff member who was not involved in the incident that led to seclusion. Does that mean that a co-regulator shouldn't not be involved in the incident that led to seclusion? Or is that just something that should be considered when choosing someone? So, someone that is involved in the incident could be a co-regulator?
So, I, I would say yes to the second part of what you said. Um, in that, if a child is in seclusion, whoever the staff member is that is monitoring that timing, that making, making sure everything is safe and going well, could be the co-regulator in the end if the child, if that is the trusted adult chosen by the child.
Okay, all right.
But when the child is then calm and they're able to get back into the therapeutic process, they offer the co-regulator and this is the order of preference by which the child would get. And that could be that person. And I would say a lot of times, it may be because that is probably who the child's working a lot with. And typically, when they're back to, um, that baseline, um, they're able to process with the person, but it could be.
That does actually make sense to me because, um, you know, a lot of times, kids will act out with adults that they trust the most. So, yeah, so that does make sense.
That was one of the, this piece here was one of the biggest part of the discussions, uh, that came forward here. And, you know, I think we were advised by the state, you know, to, you know, help have that plan developed prior to with all students. Uh, but then it gets into some of the, you know, they might choo- choose Mr. Alexander as their trusted adult, but Mr. Alexander is right there and, you know, what supersedes what.
Okay, all right, that sounds good.
And I think we also have to be respectful of the fact that, you know, um, Mr. Alexander might be the trusted adult most of the time, but on this particular Tuesday, the child is not really interested in co-regulating with Mr. Alexander and they want someone else, right? So.
Or if he's sick.
Right, so I think there has to be some, some flexibility. And I think that's why the law gave four, four preferences, right?
A- another question is, um, for restraints and seclusion, it says, it says immediate verbal report to principal, designee, or then current supervising employee. And I didn't know if immediate means immediate when it starts or immediate once the situation is calmed down enough so that someone can leave and tell the principal. I mean, I, I don't.
So, it's immediately after the seclusion or restraint. So, if a kid goes into seclusion, you need to be on the radio or the phone to the principal or vice principal to say, we've, we've had a seclusion, we've had a restraint in, you know, classroom and.
So, that would be after the child is restrained or after the child is secluded?
I think it depends on the circumstance.
I read this as after, because it, it goes on. It says immediately after the occurrence of seclusion or restraint and any threat to safety is no longer imminent. So, if the child goes into the seclusion room and they have to shut the door for safety, they would notify the supervisor immediately. If you're in a physical restraint, it would be when the child comes back to baseline or if they're, we, we always uh, encourage two people to be there, um, for safety and, um, everything else. If the second person is not involved in that direct restraint and they're able to notify the principal or let someone else notify, that's how I'm reading that immediate. And if not, it's as soon as then the incident ends.
Okay.
The testimony was about, like, you can't, if the child is throwing desks, you can't be like, okay, continue to throw desks while I go call the principal. Like, someone has to do something right then.
Yeah.
But, you know, as soon as possible.
Um, and I think, I think this is my last question. Um, it says, um, right before it talks about the use of co-regulators, it talks about, um, it talks about seclusion, seclusion rooms must have doors which are either not equipped with locks or equipped with devices that automatically disengage the lock in case of an emergency. And I was wondering if we have locks on our doors? And if we do, how are the devices to unlock the doors engaged in our se- seclusion rooms?
Sorry, I don't have a rundown of every room in the district. Um, some are, do have electronic button that holds the lock. Um, and then as soon as the button's released, it's kind of that, you have to be holding the button in order for the lock to be engaged. Um, some have a, like a drop lock, so if you have to hold up the handle, as soon as it's released, it drops down.
And someone is always there outside the door, right?
Yes, so, those are, those are two pieces of the seclusion piece is that, you know, the child has a reasonable belief they're not able to leave that room.
Okay.
And they're always monitored when they're put into seclusion.
So, someone should always be there to be able to unlock them in case of mercy? Okay, all right, that's good, thank you.
So, did I hear that correctly? That a person has to actually physically be, um, manipulating the lock in order for it to stay locked? And as soon as they let go, in both circumstances, it becomes unlocked?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, that makes me feel better. Darling, did you have another question?
Um, well, what I had been planning on saying was, instead of just reviewing the numbers monthly, um, forget the numbers and look at each incident and evaluate whether each incident was necessary based on the training they've had or not. But, I mean, Reagan kind of already hit that for me, so the new policy already has that outlined.
Right, I really like the new policy. It's really, I was, I have to be honest, I was concerned about the length because sometimes when things get really long, people tune out.
Yeah.
But every part of this policy has a specific purpose and I can't, I couldn't see any places to trim.
So, I'd like to add that, you know, we have the two elementary coordinators this year as well. And that has helped out tremendously with having people within our buildings. So, um, each of the elementary coordinators meets with our special ed teams weekly, um, at the elementary level as law, as well as Ann Price, who's our chief school psychologist. And she supports specifically the two schools that have project achievement. She meets with them weekly. Um, if there are restraints and seclusions, those are talked about at a weekly basis for students along with our board-certified behavior analyst that we have, um, within our district and our behavior specialists. Um, they are also called in and reviewed. So, Ms. Darling, I'm sorry, let me clarify. At our level, we're looking at numbers and trends. At the building level, on a weekly basis, they're looking at more particular incidences, students and things that are taking place within there from my team, as well as principals and assistant principals being the day-to-day administrators, working with their teams, um, looking at all these things. So, it, it is reviewed very frequently.
I almost feel bad for the fact that the new policy hasn't set up so that Dr. Andre gets another thing he gets to go through and evaluate. Adding more things onto his plate as if he's not busy.
Right, I mean, it does say, or his designee. So, technically, he can designate this out to an assistant superintendent or Mr. Alexander or, you know, some other person.
Um, I have, I have another question, I'm sorry, I thought of another one.
Yep.
Um, are the parents, the one, do the parents receive the training?
Yes.
Which training?
The training, the CPI training.
Yes, so, I, it, all of our district-wide parents are required to receive CPI training contractually within their first year. Um, it is offered to all of our teachers, um, as well as our administrators. Um, I believe at this point, um, I know at the elementary level, every principal and assistant principal is, is certified, I believe. Um, I don't want to put Mr. Beer on the spot to answer that, but, um, I think we're, we're very, very close to all of our administrators having that certification. Any of our teachers that work in either our intensive needs or project achievement programs are trained as well. One of our project achievement teachers is a trainer as well, along with two of our behavior specialists are trainers. Uh, we have six trainers, seven trainers?
Seven.
Seven, um, in our district. Um, so, uh, we, we try to, to run the gamut and we offer those every early release day, um, as well as workshop days. Um, and we, we do it as creative as we can as far as meeting time. We have trained, I personally have trained, um, five different mornings between seven and nine for late schools to get people, um, to make sure that they have the training that they need.
Oh, so, so it's not just done during professional development days, it's done throughout the year?
We want to provide the tools to our staff whenever we can, um, and provide them those opportunities, um, knowing that people have a lot of commitments, um, after school. So, how can we be creative either doing them before the working hours or directly after and breaking up the long training into multiple days so that we can get them that tool?
Um, are, are the behavior specialists housed in, um, at Broad Street or are they?
So, our behavior specialists go across the district.
Uh huh.
Um, they each have an office space within one of our buildings somewhere. Um, but they are, um, they are never stagnant and letting moss grow around their feet in one particular building because, um, they are moving. There are, um, behavior specialists who are assigned to those programs who do go in and support those programs and meet with those teams, um, as well, as well as, uh, Ms. Price.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Mr. Johnson, did you have any questions? I didn't see your hand or the light, but I didn't want to ignore you.
No, no questions, I was just reviewing everything. I, I just was noticing that it, it does mention a lot of notice to parents after that, um, final investigation report. So, you know, following, you know, again, following chain or if it needs to be cleaned up, it, it, I see it as saying that the parents will be notified of the superintendent's, um, report. And it ma- it may just be the reading of it. And also maybe that, um, under the restraint and seclusion on page twenty-two, E is the written information to parent and guardian while E, the final investigation, follows that. Maybe that's just an order thing.
Yeah, I don't think that the, the parents absolutely can't wait until the final investigation report is completed, right? They have to have it way previous to that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right, so, um, based on that, I move that we replace Nashville's version of JKAA entirely with the, uh, New Hampshire School Board Association updated JKAA as we discussed at length here tonight.
Second.
Okay, so, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, I, I don't feel comfortable voting on this until we see if we can get the parents notified.
Okay, so I'm gonna say two aye, one abstention. And then I have my question for Steve Bennett, and I don't know if I'll have the answer by, but we have the first reading and the second reading.
Okay.
So, now we have a little extra time. Okay, all right.
I just want to thank you all for your concern on this. I, I think it's great. I love the discussion and, and being able to talk about, you know, something that is very important, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander, and thank you, Mr. Beer, for coming to answer our questions.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not sure how Mr. Beer avoided the hot seat, but.
Thank you for all your patience with me.
Okay. Okay, so we skipped over IKL and IKLR, um, upon request. And so now we're gonna go back to those. Um, and so we have two, and we have a guest, um, Chris Smith. And I don't know, Ms. Smith, I don't know your title. Oh, press the button.
Uh, my title is Coordinator of Digital Learning.
Ooh, that's a cool title.
Fancy.
It is. Uh, so, Ms. Smith, our Coordinator of Digital Learning is here, um, to talk to us about these policies. So, um, are we starting with the?
I'll start with IKL.
We want to start with IKL? We don't want to do it backwards? Okay.
Oh, actually.
Can we do it backwards?
Yes, we should do it backwards.
Okay, I want to do it backwards because I'm excited about this one. So, IKLR, which is page ten, no.
Eleven.
Page eleven of your, um, packets is, um, a Nashville-generated policy. Um, and I understand Ms. Smith and a bunch of other people were instrumental in creating this policy. Um, and when we, we started looking at it, we were like, oh, we don't actually have, um, an academic honesty and integrity policy. So, we went back and then decided to add that as well. Um, but I just want to let you guys know that we sent this policy up to, um, the attorneys up at the state for review and they were just delighted with it. Um, and so, um, I'll turn it over to Mr. Poska and Ms. Smith to talk about, um, the genesis of this policy and, and what their hopes are for it. Because I, I really just was like, ooh, this is cool. And that was the limit of my, my involvement.
Thank you. I think over the course of last, last school year, there were a couple instances where the use of AI um, by students and staff came up. And in, as you get into it, i- it really wasn't very clear where everything was. It, it was certainly, it's an evolving field, uh, constantly changing. And there was certainly recognition, not only on our part, but people across, you know, across this, across the country, that some guardrails needed to be put into place. At the same time, uh, we felt the need to make sure our staff felt comfortable utilizing AI, AI as a resource in their classrooms. Um, I had reached out to, to Ms. Smith and Diane Vino, uh, to talk about, you know, what that could possibly look like. And Ms. Smith and Ms. Vino worked to create some professional development for staff at the secondary level about utilizing AI in the classrooms. And I think that was a, a plan was put into place and I'm gonna kind of kick it over to Ms. Smith to talk about how that kind of then took on a life of its own to talk about kind of some of the, you know, some of the needs of what the, the staff have. And I think the important piece that's so really important is that IKLR, what you're looking at there was generated by Nashville staff. So, that is totally homegrown, uh, under the, under the leadership of, of Ms. Smith and Ms. Vino with our Nashville staff. And this is what they were talking about, and then we've worked to tweak it a little bit. But I'm gonna kick it over to Ms. Smith to talk about how we got to that point.
Poska, it was, uh, you know, really born from a cohort experience that Mr. Poska began to speak of that began in the summertime with thirty-three teachers, uh, exploring the use of, of AI for innovative teaching. But where AI, you know, we are at the very beginning of, of this journey, um, building teacher capacity and understanding how to use AI as teachers first was important. And of course, over the last year, it was very apparent that many teachers came to know about AI as it was coming up from academic integrity infractions is how they came to learn, excuse me, about ChatGPT and, and other generative AI, um, models that could create, you know, content, uh, that wouldn't be necessarily the students. So, in order for us to move forward, you know, it was to be able to construct, an environment policy-wise that would allow for teachers to have, um, a say in when and, and how AI was used in, in the learning environment from units to lessons to research, what have you. Given that we don't yet have, um, AI checkers that are accurate, we don't have these things in place. So, we want to make sure that we are putting the control in the teacher's hands on the use because AI and the use of AI can be, um, you know, absolutely innovative. But it also can be a shortcut to completing assignments and, and, um, detouring away from the learning experience, if you will. So, so not wanting students to be cut off from the use of AI, um, knowing that we still have issues regarding what tools can be used. So, really, right now, when we talk about teachers using AI in the classroom, we're talking about them modeling the use and being right there with them on the use of AI uh, so that we are teaching them to use it as a critical thinking tool, as, you know, expanding their knowledge base, all ethical and responsible uses by modeling. ChatGPT is an open source, uh, resource and by definition of open. ChatGPT is an open source, uh, resource, and by definition of open source resources, those are not approved for student use as you cannot have a data privacy agreement signed in place. We know though, that that will change and there will be tools that will have data privacy agreements in place. But we should not wait for that in order to begin introducing the proper use of ChatGPT. Students are using these tools on their cell phones at home. And so it's really our, our responsibility to kind of navigate this in a way that, honors student data privacy, but also, um, begins the proper instruction of their use. So we created, and, and there was a lot of fear, right? We know this nationally and, and there was a lot of fear of we, you know, getting past the good versus evil of ChatGPT and other generative models. And so, uh, a subset of that innovative cohort, I, uh, Diane and I called upon volunteers that were very passionate about the, um, the policy that would be put in place. So we constructed the draft and, uh, and then brought it to these teachers. About out of the thirty-three, I would say fifteen teachers, uh, put considerable work in the feedback down to every, every word, every choice of, you know, phraseology so that we were coming up with something that we knew that would be revisited just like the policy we just talked about, that it is important that we move with the times on this, but have that good starting point that allows, based on where we are in that limited, kind of, we're still Wild West with, with, um, generative AI and students, that we have something that begins that, um, construct so that we have, um, some consistencies in place.
Thank you. I'm so glad you were here to speak to it tonight, um, because I, I, I get a lot of feedback from people who are like, well, we should just ban it. And I, I think that this idea of coming out ahead of something and instead of just saying, well, we don't understand it, or this is scary, we're going to ban it. Instead to say, well, how do we teach our kids how to use this appropriately as a tool is really innovated them. And, and I'm, I'm really excited to, to be the first to do it. Uh, questions? Yes, Mr. Johnson?
I'm just going to say, I mean, I, I see this as being very effective with kids who are on IEPs or 504s. A lot of, this can definitely help with a lot of learning disorders and getting past those certain points with the assist of AI and things like ChatGPT to help those students collect their thoughts and, those tools to, to be on the same level in the classroom.
Questions, comments? Darling?
So I recently started learning more about ChatGPT. There's tons of like YouTube video tutorials and stuff like that. It's become my dear friend. Um, and it's telling me right now that I have used this program to inquire about various topics, including information on policy writing or straight and seclusion policy in schools, clarification on certain technologies, and assistance in understanding complex documents. And I saw guidance on election related information such as dates, registration of voting procedures. So, yeah, I can see right here, because I asked it nicely, what I've, what I've done with it. There are so many uses. And I gotta say, like, homegrown is always the way to go. So I love this policy inside and out, and I'm excited to see all the ways the kids are going to find the loopholes and ways to break the rules anyways.
Well, I'm, I'm hopeful that this policy covers some of that. So if you guys look at, if you, we look at the policy, which is on, uh, I don't know what page I'm on, um, page. Eleven. Yep, there it is. Page eleven of our packet. It talks about appropriate use versus inappropriate use. And so I think we need to make it very clear to our students and parents that we are not giving a blanket, anyone can use generative AI at any time on any assignment. That is not the point of this. The point is that the teachers are driving the bus still, and the teachers get to decide when and how students will be using AI so that it is a learning tool and not, you know, for plagiarism. And we didn't put any specific pro, like consequences or prohibitions in the policy because we already have a student behavior policy that covers that.
I think, you know, to that point, when Ms. Smith brought this forward and, and we, we worked on it together and then went back to her group to kind of get some final approval, uh, we did submit it to Will Phillips, uh, who's the attorney at the NHSBA to get some, some guidance, you know, are we way off here? Are we on there? And that's the feedback that Ms. Raymond shared about earlier is that, you know, this is kind of ahead of the curve a little bit. And I think this, you know, I think it will be fluid, you know, as we go forward here. But it puts, you know, I used the word earlier, and I'll continue to use it, it puts some guardrails in place about what's appropriate for us and how we can be utilizing it. And I think, you know, I think Ms. Darling's example was a great example. She used ChatGPT appropriately for, as a resource to look up some things. There is a time and a place to utilize these things, and we have to recognize that and make sure that we're doing it safely. You know, not only as, you know, as teachers, but also our students. So I think this has been a, a certainly a, a learning curve. And I think as part of that deeper thinking cohort that Ms. Smith was talking about, teachers had to kind of get their fears addressed about what this means going forward. And I think this, that was perhaps possibly kind of the, a bigger piece of that whole puzzle. And then I'd also like to say that Dr. Andre is working with this group and also is a part of a national group that is also investigating this. So this is something that's consistently involving. We're trying to, you know, keep it on the forefront of what we're doing. But it's a, it's a valuable resource going forward. And I think by putting IKLR in place, it, it provides some more support for our teachers to utilize it in the classroom and then work with our students about how it can be utilized in the classroom.
So I just, one other note on the policy, um, part of the feedback that we got from, um, Attorney Phillips was to put uh, in that opening paragraph, um, some examples of what generative AI is, like ChatGPT and Google Bard, et cetera. We did that because, um, some old bogies like me maybe wouldn't know what it was if we didn't have examples. But the policy does not only cover those. It covers whatever else comes out. Just thinking about how quickly technology advances. It's been thirty years since I was in high school, and there was no internet back then. So, you know, I, I can only wonder what, what's going to come up in the next five or ten years that we're going to have to adjust to. So before our kids start using it, hopefully. Excuse me. Any other questions?
I was just wondering how you would go about, um, citing, uh, citing AI tools? Is that something that the teachers would up with a, a plan to do that or individually?
That is, that is definitely evolving. I think that right now, the use of AI give in classes is from a modeling basis. When we are able to have a generative AI tool that students would then be able to, a, a teacher could then assign and say, please use ChatGPT to conduct XYZ research and generate your, your essay, for example. Then there would be, and, and library media specialists are part of this, uh, cohort to investigate how MLA and APA are responding to, uh, citations and the appropriate citations. I would say we're about two steps, you know, behind that piece, given that we really want to do this, you know, following the rules of, you know, student data privacy first. And that is, you know, the modeling use of in the classroom, you know, is not to that point yet of citation. But all of those pieces we're finding with all of our research and as, you know, to, to stay well informed as things are changing daily, um, and, and update, thankfully, updating daily, uh, that we're getting more, um, concrete, you know, rules in terms of the citation of generative AI. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Johnson?
Just, of course, again, it's great and stuff. And being, um, um, in the art field and stuff, we have a lot of issues. I have a lot of people I know whose art is being used unfairly in certain AI programs and whatnot. So we should always be aware of some of the problems with AI drawing and, and committing plagiarism without even, you know, a kid using uh, art program that does AI, doesn't realize that they're committing plagiarism because they don't realize that this is drawing from all these artists. Awareness of it. I mean, obviously, this is all going to evolve as we go along because it's going to keep moving forward and there's going to be legal challenges and whatnot to where AI draws its information from. Um, and just something to be aware of as we go ahead in the future.
Mr. Poska and I had, have had a couple of conversations about lawsuits that are currently happening from, like authors, for example, who, there's a big lawsuit where, I mean, it was like eight hundred and eighty thousand copyrighted works that were loaded into ChatGPT. And so this is a problem. But I don't want to hold off on us making a policy on how we handle AI until after those things are resolved because kids are doing it anyway.
Yeah, no, absolutely agree. Because again, the benefits of what kids can do with AI, you know, need to be tapped into and need to be utilized.
But my hope is that we will have some sort of resolution legally, and I, I would, I would hope that there's some, you know, um, laws put into place that are enforceable to stop people from, I mean, essentially, the, the programmers have stolen stuff. But you can't let AI loose on the internet because, because the, the negativity and the, you know, the, the violent rhetoric that's out there is what the AI then spits back out. So I don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, I mean, they found that with studies where they just let an AI go ahead and the AI starts to become quite angry.
So I don't, I don't know what the answer is. And I think, but I think it's important that, that our teachers are able to talk about this stuff too in a way that prepares our students for understanding what's happening out in the world.
Yeah, because it's going to be part of their, as they go into adulthood, it's going to be part of it. I mean, when I was a kid, we, when I started art school, we used, we drew everything. We used Chromatex and photographs and airbrushes. And by the time I graduated, it was Photoshop and Illustrator and all computerized. So we, we have to understand it as it evolves. And really, these kids will be working in an AI world when they come out of school. And so they should be aware of it now and know what they can and can't do and get a sense of that.
I agree. And I, I think, I think school, I think, you know, primary and secondary school is the time to start that and not throw them into it in college. Like, here you go, figure it out, um, if we can help it. So on that note, I move that we, uh, approve IKLR um, and send it to the full board.
Second.
Oh, you can second it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And so that brings us to IKL, which is a policy that we do not have. And it is an academic honesty and integrity policy. Under our student behavior standards, JIC, which is also a very long policy, it lists what the consequences for cheating are. Like you can get, you know, you can get a zero on the assignment, you can get attention, there's levels of consequences depending on how severe and repeated the infraction is. But nowhere in there did we have a thing that said, hey, this is what cheating actually is. And I think we all think we know what it is, but sometimes it's nice to spell it out so that, um, it empowers our, our teachers and it also empowers our students to know, um, what side of the line they're on. Does anyone have questions on it or objections to us adopting a policy?
I like it.
Yeah, there was, it's cool that there's, there's all this stuff, um, like things that I wasn't aware of that would be considered cheating. So I think, um, especially like the self plagiarism. I'm glad I didn't know about that when I was in school.
Right? Yeah, I remember in high school, we had a, a student, I went to high school, read The Hobbit and did a, a book report on The Hobbit every single year from seventh grade until senior year. And finally, our English teacher, senior year, was like, dude, I had you last year. Like, you're going to have to read another book. There are sequels. So I, I think it's important for us to know that, for kids to know that, you know, there's a whole world of learning out there and you can read more than one book, you know, and write more than one essay.
And I think, you know, we were, we were advised that if we were going forward with that, um, the generative AI policy, that we probably should implement this, uh, IKL because it goes hand in hand with it. So kind of bringing them both forward at this time. And that's why we, we actually went out of order at Ms. Raymond's recommendation, do IKL dash R to, to understand how we got to IKL.
So anybody have any other questions or comments on IKL? All right. Then I move that we, uh, approve IKL and send it to the full board.
Second.
We're like a team tonight. All right. Oh, I didn't write down. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, so thank you so much, Ms. Smith, for coming and talking to us about this.
Thank you very much.
So the other items on the agenda tonight were, um, our first and second reading. Back in December, we had a first reading of IJ and EBCB at the full board. It probably should have been brought forward for a second reading at our meeting last week, but we didn't. So, the second reading will be next time. I included them in here for the new members so that you would have them. The way it works is policies we sent to the first, to the full board get a first reading at the next board meeting. Um, and first reading doesn't mean we actually read it out loud. It's printed on the agenda. It's part of the agenda materials. And it gives the public an opportunity to ask initial questions. And for us to, based on those questions and comments from the public, we have an opportunity to decide if we want to bring it back to policy for more work before it gets voted on. So at our next agenda, full agenda, there'll be these policies tonight for a first reading, and then those two policies from last time for a second reading. Second reading, again, the public gets a chance to talk about it. The board can ask questions. And then we vote to approve or disprove, disapprove those, um, policies. The only other thing I had for tonight, um, on page eight. Wait, let's see. All this scrolling. I miss having a paper. So on page, uh, eight of your packet, I included, I didn't, Tara did, she's amazing, um, some of our policies that I would like to move forward with as we go forward. Um, and so these next policies are, um, all have legal changes that were signed by the governor in August. So we're required by law to update them. Um, you can see IKL is actually on this list. So is JKAA, so we're ahead of the curve. Um, so over the next couple of months, we'll pick a couple of these. If anybody has other policies they want us to look at, you can always email me and I will add them to the queue. And, um, we, we fluctuate, we, we vary what we have to do with ones that are really old and need to be updated, and then administrative priorities, and then board requests. So it's a lot. Um, and then sometimes we get stuff from the students. Like, I understand that they were working on a, address code policy with the student senate, and it kind of hit an administrative snag. So hopefully that will come forward at some point too. That's all I've got. If anybody has any questions? No? Then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
So we're adjourned at seven twenty-six PM.